County Planning Commission will start up.
All right, Claire Anderson?
Here.
Wally Wolf?
Here.
Jennifer Elliott?
Here.
Diane Landers?
Here.
Sunny DeFolish?
Here.
And absent is James Hatcher.
All right, let's move on to approving the minutes from the August eighth meeting. It's been that long since we've...
It's been peaceful.
Met? Wow. Okay, is there... I know Dustin emailed them out any additions or corrections for that meeting with meeting minutes? Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes from the August eighth meeting, raise your right hand. Okay, we are going to skip our yearly reorganization. The Planning Commission will do that after. We'll skip down to item number five, replat of Red Bud Lake. A new plat has been submitted for review. This plat will adjust the lot lines of existing parcels and allow for the sale of lots in Red Bud Lake. The Planning Commission is to review the plat for adherence to regulations. So, this is a file number. Owner is Red Bud Lake Association. The existing land use is residential. Dustin, do you have any words before we hear from Red Bud Lake?
No, this is actually kind of cut and dry. They are replating. In the original plat, they had what we have labeled as parcel one there was some of the park area and drainage area they had designated in the first one. They're looking to sell some of that. And then back, the west side, they're removing some of these lines and creating a couple of new lots in the same place over here. So, other than that, it's pretty cut and dry. They're not changing anybody's actual parcel that they own, except for one individual, and his name is on the plat to be signed.
That's weird.
Him and his wife actually both own it, so to be signed. Other than that, it's all in the land that they're adjusting.
Anybody here from Red Bud Lake Association that would like to speak?
We all. I'm Rich Bennett. I'm the one that you gave the signature on.
Okay. We will, when they get the vellum to us, the actual one that we're going to sign, they'll probably get that around to you at some point. But we don't usually try to get that until after the planning commissions have gone through, and that way we know what we're looking at. So, we don't need a signature from you tonight. We'll hunt you out later.
So, what does that become? Just a different block number, different block number? A tender to what I have now?
Yours will be an... But, and I believe that your parcel lines are just shifting a little. So, it'll actually be... Your land will just look a little different, so...
And which one is he?
He's going to be down... Which lot number are you currently?
I'm going to eight right now.
Okay. He's going to be down in this area here.
He's going to be where?
Existing...
Oh, okay.
On the west side.
On the west side. Back... Oh, you're back here. I'm sorry. That's right.
Three, two, five, six, seven, eight. You're six and you're going to be eight? Is that what you said?
You see the biggest one there?
Uh-huh.
One hundred fifty-four?
Right.
Okay. I... That's where I'm at now, and all it was is it's moved over ten foot. That's all we did. We shifted it to ten foot. From the old number down to the old number. Six, I think it was.
Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to address the Planning Commission in regards to the Red Bud Lake replat?
When does this become final, or when is it?
Well, depending on what happens with the Planning Commission today, it will go in front of the county commission the... It will be the eighth of May, or seventh of May, I'm sorry. And then, once all the signatures are signed and everything, and then filed with the Register of Deeds, it can be anytime after the seventh. But all the signatures have to be on it, and then it has to be accepted by the Register of Deeds office. There's no specific... Now, it's done until the Register of Deeds stamps it.
Any other public comments or questions? Any discussion or questions from the board regarding the replat? Well, we'll go through the conditional use criteria factors that we need to go through. We'll do that briefly here. A, whether the change in classification will be consistent with the intent and purpose of these regulations. The criteria for planning has been established previously. B, the character and condition of the surrounding neighborhood and its effect on the proposed change. The proposed changes would allow for a few more homes to be built in the area. The proposed plat would allow for the sale of lots previously designated as park area, and proceeds can go to repairs of the road and water structures on site. C, whether the proposed amendment is made necessary because of change or changing conditions. The proposed changes to the plat are of no direct result of changing conditions. D, the current zoning and uses of nearby properties and the effect on existing nearby land uses upon such a change in classification. There would be no changes to the nearby properties or land uses. E, whether every use that would be permitted on the property is reclassified would be compatible with the uses permitted on other properties in the immediate vicinity. Red Bud has its own zoning classification. This allows for such uses to be maintained in that area only. F, the suitability of the applicant's property for the uses to which it has been restricted. The uses permitted are permitted under the previously mentioned zoning classification. G, the length of time the subject property has remained vacant or undeveloped as zoned. This is not applicable. H, whether adequate sewer and water facilities and all other needed public services, including transportation, exist or can be provided to serve the uses that would be permitted on the property as if it were reclassified. Adequate sewer and water is provided by the City of Avenue. I, the general amount of vacant land that currently has the same zoning classification proposed for the subject property, particularly in the vicinity of the subject property, and any special circumstances that may give substantial part of that vacant land available. This is not applicable. J, the recommendations of permanent or professional staff that have been recommended to the zoning commission, by the staff to approve of the replat as presented. It allows for expansion and better to the overall conditions of the Red Bud Lake properties. K, whether the proposed amendment would be in conformance to and further enhance the implementation of the comprehensive plan. This is within conformance to our comprehensive plan. L, whether the relative gain to the public health, safety, and general welfare outweighs the hardship imposed upon the applicant by not upgrading the value of the property by such a reclassification. This is not applicable. M, such are the factors that may be relevant from facts and evidence presented in the application. There were none, and staff recommendation is recommendable of the requested replat. Are there any other questions for Dustin, or anyone else, any other comments from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I so moved that we approve the replat of the Red Bud Lake Association.
Seconded. It's removed and seconded that we approve the Red Bud Lake Association replat. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you all for your...
Thank you.
...recitation. All right, we will move on to the next agenda item. We'll go back up to the yearly reorganization of the Planning Commission. Dustin?
It's up to you guys to start deciding who's going to do what. Who's chairman, who's vice chair.
Well, you're secretary.
Yes.
That's really... So, there's really just two?
There's two. I keep trying to talk to you guys and having someone else be secretary, but nobody listens, so it's just down to two.
This might have to be done now.
This is your second year.
Jennifer and I... Did you say Jennifer and I are both down already?
Well, yours... You're going to be vice chair.
Say again?
You're going to be vice chair. You could be chair, but...
I thought you said the last...
All you know is you can't.
I'm the only one. I only got some free men.
She can be chair. So, because you guys are...
I can move to vice chair.
You can technically move to vice chair. You guys can switch seats, so...
Thanks a lot.
I'm going to render my opinion such as it is. I do think that we need to pass it around. I mean, of course, it's up to the board how they vote, but I'm just saying that...
I think Diana would make a wonderful chair.
I agree. Did you people all talk?
Actually, I sent out an email to everybody, but...
But me, yeah, yeah.
I told you I'd get back at you.
Yeah, I know. Here, you can have your free water.
Well, I've been there...
If you're willing to do it, I mean...
Huh?
I said, I agree if she's willing to do it.
Yeah, I've been there, done that, got the T-shirt, so...
You got a T-shirt? I didn't even get that.
You're not done yet! I would make a motion to nominate Diane Landers for chair.
I would second it.
It has been moved and seconded that Diane would be the chair. Do we vote on that, or do we have to just ask Diane if she accepts?
Well, if she accepts, then you vote.
Okay. No pressure.
Okay, I'll accept.
Oh, yeah.
Aggressively, but I'll do it.
Okay. All in favor of Diane Landers becoming our chair, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Gee, thanks. I won the lottery.
I've heard it pays real well.
Now, who's vice chair?
Yeah.
Well, I think Jennifer should move down.
I... I mean, that's fine with me unless somebody else wants to...
Does that sound okay to you guys? I don't want to do it. Do you want to? I don't want to do it.
No, let's do Jennifer.
Okay.
Okay.
Dee?
Move over to chair.
So, we need a nomination?
We need a nomination.
I nominate Jennifer Elliott to be vice chair.
Seconded.
It's removed and seconded that I, Jennifer Elliott, become the vice chair. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay.
You did accept, right?
Yes, I did.
Objectively.
Diane's going to the challenge.
No, no, I didn't.
Yeah, wait until we see what's coming up.
That one looks like a tough meeting.
Okay.
It's a two-year limit as the chair.
Yeah, every year you get to reappoint, but you can only do it twice.
Yeah, this last year we didn't. The year before we did.
It should be twenty-four meetings.
Point your tongue. If you jig me, I'm going to punch you down.
This is where you talk about that kind of thing.
Twenty-four meetings. How long would that take?
Some years. That could be a long time.
Yeah, I was going to say, last year we had, I think, six meetings total. But they were like April, May, June, July, August.
Yeah, everything was big, big, big. They were all early, yeah. The year before we had...
But that equates to... She did kind of get off kind of light.
Therefore, being vice chair is...
Remember the year before and all of those meetings? I did not get off. Oh, and I remember running a really big meeting where I wasn't even actually the chair, remember?
Oh, that's right, when one didn't show up. Yeah, okay.
Well, technically...
I get some extra credit for that.
Well, if you're dealing with extra credit, technically you took over for Gary.
Yes.
So, you really only did it one year.
And that was a terrible...
No, no, no.
Charge of. No, no, no.
I think I've served my time.
You did. I think you served your time with that one particular...
Is there anything else we need to vote on or talk about, Dustin?
Well, actually, we've got the two regulation changes that I've got in your packet that we need to go over.
Okay.
Well, we'll start with the longest one there. The... This... In the back of the packet, Article twenty-three is the article in our regulations that designates who can be on the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Can we turn the lights on?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't even need that on my person.
Yeah.
There you go.
Article twenty-three designates who serves as the Board of Zoning Appeals. Now, currently, the Board of Zoning Appeals is three members. They haven't met since I took over. I have a feeling with the way things are shifting, people moving out to the county more, businesses popping up, starting in the county, I have a feeling that we're probably going to see a couple here and there. But what I've done is I've rewritten the... Basically, the first paragraph to read as it is in your packet that says the full Board of the Planning Commission shall serve as the Board of Zoning Appeals. Now, how this works, because a lot of... I'll probably spend quite a bit of time explaining the... How this is not a conflict.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. Why is this not a conflict?
Because the Planning Commission decides on items of application, conditional use permits, the subdivisions, business plans, stuff like that. The Board of Zoning Appeals meets anytime I tell somebody no, they can't do something because it's against the regulations as they're written, and they disagree with me. In my office, my no is never the final no. If I tell somebody, you know, there's no way around this. Let's say somebody wants to put up a new building, and vehemently want to put it in this specific corner, and it's too close to the property lines. And I say, okay, well, you've got to be fifty feet away, and there's no other way around it, because in some places we allow for you can build as close as existing buildings. Some places we allow for, depending on the zoning, is the footage requirement. But let's say that this specific case, this individual wants to build that building ten feet away from the property line, and their minimum is supposed to be fifty. And I say, okay, I can't permit that. They would then file a petition to go in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals. That is not something that the Planning Commission would usually see. But the Board of Zoning Appeals looks at a situation where the administrator has said no, and the applicant disagrees, or yes, and somebody else disagrees. It's basically an appeal to my decision. So, what the Planning Commission will see is usually never what the Board of Zoning Appeals will see. Now, there are going to be some cases where somebody has to ask for an exemption, and then that exemption would allow them to do a conditional use permit. But what would happen would be you would hold a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, start to finish. Then you would close that meeting off, you would adjourn that meeting, and then open a Planning Commission meeting. They wouldn't be held at the same time. They would be two completely separate meetings, same day and time. But, you know, it would be like the Board of Zoning Appeals would meet tonight at seven, and the Planning Commission would meet immediately following.
And you said there's other counties that are doing this?
Most other counties actually do this, and to be honest, originally, when they wrote the regulations in two thousand nine, it was set up to do this.
Why'd they change it?
That's right.
I'm not sure. But it was changed, and when I went back to start looking at stuff, I don't see where or why. But it was shifted, and so I thought that it would just be a lot better to go back to this, because then we all know who's on it. We all know...
Well, I mean, I've been on the Planning Commission for quite a few years now, and I've not heard of any of the zoning appeals board meetings.
The last one was in December of two thousand eleven. I know that because it was the first meeting I ever attended, and it was for a garage that was out by Own Fair Road, just to the north of I-70, if I'm not mistaken. They had built it and then came in for the permit, and they had built it too close. It turned out that it was okay because the neighbors were fine with it. It blocked their pool, you know, all kinds of stuff. But, long story short, it took us... Basically, we had to call people to make sure that we were going to meet, because there are only three members.
And if they don't meet very often?
If they don't meet very often, and if you can't get ahold of two of them, you can't have the meeting. So, with the Board of Seven, that also reduces down to where like today, we're missing a sixth or the seventh member, because we don't have one yet, and then James is gone. Even if one of you was gone, we could still hold a meeting because there's still four. There's still at least four.
Well, I think the positive I see about it is, you know, the Board of Zoning Appeals only meets when there's a problem. If it's made a problem with one of your decisions, I don't think that's really often enough to be familiar with the zoning regulations.
Because they all follow the same regulation. They're supposed to look at the same regulation to make those decisions, and they don't do it often enough. So, I mean, you guys barely meet often enough to be able to, you know, to roll through them, so that was kind of my call.
Who are the three?
Currently, Claire Anderson, Mark Picking, and we don't know who the third person is.
You seem to agree with Marshall. You should be on that.
Yeah, and the last one I heard was somebody that the County Commission affirmed two, three years ago, and...
There's no record of it, or?
Yeah.
How do you not have a record of that?
Well, they have a record of the affirmation, but I never have a record of that person ever serving.
Oh.
So, and since there haven't been any meetings, and the terms are two years, technically...
Technically, we don't have one.
We don't have one right now. But that was on purpose because we were restructuring.
If I recall in two thousand nine, when you were talking about and why there were... Somebody, exactly, somebody wanted that way, but I remember when we were doing that, Doug Thompson sat there, and he says, "I don't know why we're doing another board." He said, "It's hard enough to get people to sit on one, and now you've got two." He made that comment.
Without sounding too negative, I believe the decision was made arbitrarily, and I believe it wasn't necessarily made with the board approval.
I would agree.
So, because I, like I said, I couldn't find anywhere it was shifted, and then all of a sudden it was in the regulations approved. So, there was no record of the change in the minutes, and that's kind of a big change.
It is. The question... I would have a question on this proposed changes. Now, are we going to vote on these at some point?
Yeah, we can actually... I put these in the public. I put these out in the paper. You guys can vote on this tonight.
Okay, good.
Well, this is the one. Now, what's the second one? You said there were a couple?
The other ones I need to talk to you guys about, but I put one of them in the paper, but I don't have any written changes, because I want to talk to you guys about the changes that we could make.
So, should we go ahead and vote on this one?
Yeah, these are two separations.
And then move on? Okay, okay.
So, I have just one question.
Yeah.
The Board of Zoning Appeals, it makes it sound like if it's something they don't like that we did, then they can appeal, but it's only something you...
It's only me, because there's a hierarchy for how these decisions are made. Decisions come... Administration decisions coming out of my office, if they don't like them, they go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. If they don't like the Board of Zoning Appeals decision, it goes to district court. Here, in the Planning Commission, if they don't like the decision that the Planning Commission makes, which is a recommendation, it just goes in front of the county commissioners. So, that's why the two can be the same people but separate entities, because those two never really cross paths.
Right. If it went to district court, we would never see it as a Planning Commission.
Right, because at that point, the district court says yea or nay, boom, it's done. So, the only time that one would is, like I said, if they came in, for instance. But we also have a different... We have a way to avoid that, where, for instance, the country-by-design thing, they're requesting permission for private road. They're naming it to our scheme. They're going to do it to our recommendations and stuff in their plat, but they're requesting it be a private road, which means that they maintain a road. But our regulations say that there can't be private roads, except by exception from the County Commission. So, they can go in and ask permission from the County Commission to have this road. That's why in the last one, on my admin report, one of the conditions I had down was that based on approval for their road from the County Commission, because even if it goes through all the way through, and the County Commission at the end decides to go, you know, we liked the plat, but we're not going to give you permission to have a public or a private road, then they're going to have to come back and show how that road's going to be public. So, you know, it's contingent on there. So, we even have a few ways that where the two won't meet. So, we tried... Well, I tried to go through and make sure that it wasn't ever going to have to cross hairs, so that there wouldn't be any propriety. Technically, I'm the focal point for any propriety on this, so...
Well, I think it's a good idea. I mean, we're meeting anyways, and we're all, you know, at least quite familiar versus a board of three, couple of years. I think we'd probably be better qualifying.
So, would you entertain a motion to approve the change?
Well, am I still... Or did I hand chair over to you?
No, no.
We have a bid for it.
Okay, well, I'll...
We have a bid for it. You don't get to hand me the spot, honey.
I got to run, honey. Until you take over, right?
Yes, I do.
Well, I will entertain a motion. Or is there any more discussion or questions about?
And please feel free to ask questions.
About some change?
I think that... This, in my opinion, this is an easy one, and I would make a motion that we approve Article twenty-three dash one oh two, but the changes as published for the powers and duties that the people that sit on the full Board of the Planning Commission are also the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Seconded.
Okay, so it's removed and seconded that we approve the changes to Article twenty-three in regards to organization, procedure, and powers and duties. All... If you approve, everybody raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. It has been approved, the changes to Article twenty-three. So, does this mean we serve on two boards now?
Yes, you guys are...
Yeah, well, they... Well, we still have the same chair and vice chair.
Nope, it will have its own hierarchy when we meet for the... What we'll have to do at some point is meet as the Board of Zoning Appeals, and you guys will have to decide who's the chair and the vice chair for it. You guys can designate that it's the same person, but then you also have to set up your terms, how long everybody serves on the board as officers, not, you know, because if you're on the Planning Commission, you're also on the Board of Zoning Appeals. You're kind of stuck. So, you guys will have to go through an organization meeting for that, because it'll be a different set of bylaws and everything, but I'm going to have to write those, but I wasn't going to take the time to write them unless you guys were through with this. Because writing bylaws takes a while.
Because you don't have enough to do.
Yeah.
So...
Keep it simple.
Yeah.
All right, next change. The first change, Dustin?
The next one that I'm going to talk about is Article twenty-one, one oh five, fifty-one. Now, it's not like I said, it's not in packets. What this is, is it's part of the conditional use permitting, and it's about cell phone towers, telecommunications towers. Currently, we have a three-mile limit. The towers can't be within three miles of another tower. Now, we've made a couple of exceptions for that with the old microwave antennas, the really tall ones, but the cell phone towers could be, you know, close to those. But as you're all well aware, as you get farther out in the county, the data and your phone usage drops dramatically. And I've had quite a few people coming in to talk about and requests from different cell phone companies about reducing that limit. And I see the viability of it in the future, because eventually, basically, you know, we're going to be dealing with higher-power equipment, but more people on it. So, I wanted to talk about reducing it from three miles to a mile, but putting a huge amount of restriction on that mile. Currently, we request that they co-locate if they can. I would like to put a very strict regulation on that that says that they have to provide us in writing from the owner of the closest tower why they can't co-locate, and that financial obligation is not a good excuse. Because if they come into us and say, well, the rent's too high, that's not our problem.
What would be a good viable excuse for they couldn't co-locate?
Tower's full, if their tower's full. Their equipment is too big, or our tower can't support the engineering.
Gotcha.
You know, and I'll put some of those in writing, but I wanted to talk about that one mile, because eventually, we're going to start getting companies coming in and talking about it. I've already kind of had a couple talking about, and when I mentioned the three-mile rule, they backed off and haven't heard from them in a year or so, but I'm pretty sure they're going to start coming back.
What are some of the other surrounding counties? What... What's Saline and Gary doing?
Saline allows for a mile, but they don't... They're not as strict on their co-location requirements, but Salina is much larger in span, so they have them intermittently in Salina. And then you've got the little towns of Saria and Gipsen and that kind of thing. They're close enough proximity that they're... And they're not nearly as hilly, so...
The other thing, too, is when you look at our county, there's a lot of interest in I-70. Let's take care of that, because we... And so many... We don't care about anybody that's not driving down I-70 in so many words, but we are a long county, so what's happening when I'm driving to the south way down here?
Exactly. And actually, that's where the interest has been, is on northern fifteen and southern fifteen. And last year, we approved... No, two years ago, we approved two towers south on fifteen, on fourteen hundred, and down by Highway four. Well, one of the calls I got about a year ago was to put one in Elmo.
Well, that's a good idea, because that's a dead zone.
By a different company, by Nextech. Now, Nextech is powered by TC Telco. So, TC Telco, Nextech, anywhere that TC Telco offers service, Nextech is trying to also offer service, which, you know, economically, that's fantastic. It's a viable thing for the people around there. But at the same time, we've got to take into account the aesthetics of the area. When you're driving down fifteen, you can see the cell phone tower at rural center, and you can see the cell phone tower down by Highway four pretty much as soon as you get past seventeen hundred out. So, and then we get another one at Elmo, and, you know... So, and I have a feeling, because I got an email from a Nextech person asking about co-location... co-location requirements not too long ago, that he's going to be calling me again soon. But I wanted to talk to you guys about seeing if we could do that. Now, I can, because I put it in the paper, we can talk about the verbiage, and we can approve it tonight. And I can just open it up and rewrite the way we're talking about it, and that way we can move forward with it, and we don't have to throw it around again. But the main thing that I want to do is, is talk about the restrictions I'm putting on that, because I'd like to keep with the three miles, because if they're three miles away, we don't require them to co-locate. But what I want to do is say, up to a mile away, require, or at a minimum, a mile away, requiring this. At three miles, you don't need to prove to us why you can't co-locate, but if you're doing it a mile, between a mile and three miles, we need to know why you can't co-locate. And that's going to put them through, that alone will put them through enough of a loop that they're going to have to provide us a lot of information. Because then we know, and that's how we'll also know, that if those towers are full, then they're going to need more service anyways to serve the populace. If they're not full, then there's not the need for another tower. They're just going to have to shell out a little bit more money to be on someone else's tower. So...
I think that's a good idea.
I figure that helps us, if we do it that way, that helps us gauge where we are and where we need the towers, and where things are getting heavier. Because if we notice that, we'll use the Elmo thing as an example, if we notice that the stuff south of Highway 4 is full, they've got all those towers full, and somebody else is looking to put another tower in, that's obviously a busy area for cell phones. Why? Does that mean we need to look at making that area a little bit more of a development area? Do we need to focus on looking at that for, you know? So there's a lot of other implications we can do that'll snowball from this, and I think that we can get that, if we can get that information from them, as to why can't you co-locate.
Or it might just be that from about three miles south of Royal Center to almost Hillsborough, there was just nothing.
Yeah, no, and that's, and that's another thing.
Just bad cell phone.
And when you, when you go, because I made a lot of trips back and forth to Wichita this last week, when you go down to, just into the Marion County, about, what, three or four miles, there's another tower.
Yes.
It's by the same people that did the one at Highway 4. So, and I know that they're continuing on towards Hillsborough, but I know that now Nextech, since they're working with TC Telco, and there's a Next, there's a TC Telco, Nextech building here in town. And that's, you know, that's because they partnered up and they're working on putting stuff out there.
So if they did one at Elmo, it'd be about a mile and a half from the existing one?
Yeah, about a mile and a half. And that's kind of where I'm like, you know, that's, because that's the one that's stuck in my head, but I know that that may be a, a little hard to prove, but a mile is very accurate. So, if you guys are interested in working on that this evening, I figure, because I've kind of got something a little bit pre-written up, but it's not anything that's set, so...
Well, I think tonight, if, if people are receptive to the concept, is maybe what we need to vote on and say, "Yeah, well, I'm just saying if we approve it tonight." We're, we're comfortable with the concept now, you come up with all the restrictions.
And then we'll...
And then we'll look at those.
Yeah, I don't think we have to have you sit there and type it tonight.
No.
I think, you know, we can, we don't have to take an official vote, since we're making an official change.
That's only my suggestion.
I agree.
I agree. I'd rather see it in writing and have you be able to, I mean, unless you, you know, have a draft already.
The only, the only thing I have in, is up here, that's actually drafted out.
Let's give you time to, to work on it.
Because I also need to send it to Doug to see what the...
Oh, yeah, then let's do it.
Because there's also going to be proprietary business stuff that, you know, because, let's say, Altel says, or Altel, wow, they're not in existence anymore, let's say AT&amp;T has a tower, and Verizon wants to build another tower within a mile of them. Well, we're going to need to know why Verizon can't be on AT&amp;T's tower. AT&amp;T may just come back and go, "Because we don't want them to." Is that a legal excuse? Well, it's their tower, so technically, yes. But does that, is that for us? You know, is that, well, you know?
Probably, because it's a grandfather.
Maybe we need to put that in writing to tell the company that's wanting to co-locate on the tower, in writing that, no, we're not going to want you on there.
Exactly, and we need something from them, the applicant, and not us, not, not me doing the groundwork as to why.
Right, yeah.
The applicant will have to come in with the stuff in writing that says, "Why can't you co-locate?"
Right.
And specifically, I want to see how I can word that rent isn't the question, because how hard would it be for them to go, "Hey, would you guys charge us like $3,000 a month rent on this tower?" Sure, well, that's too expensive. Could you write out that you're going to charge us $3,000, you know, so I can get another tower put up? Finance shouldn't be the question, because if, in my, in my head, if the requirement and the need is there, cost isn't the issue.
Yeah, right.
So can you add in that, that if somebody is going to put a new tower up, they are required to allow other people to be on their tower?
We actually already do that.
Okay.
That's the thing, and that new tower down there by Elmo is already on there that they have to allow for, I think we said, we have 48 spots that they have to be able to co-locate on, and that they have to allow others to co-locate on. So we've already got that in place. So them saying no for the two towers we approved won't cut it.
That's right.
For the ones before that, they're grandfather, but the ones before, but the ones that we've approved so far, they can't just say no. They have to have an engineering reason.
That it won't support the equipment?
That it won't support the equipment, or that, and, and there's also legitimacy of, you know, well, it's an AT&amp;T tower, and it's AT&amp;T Internet Service, and our, our information is proprietary, so we can't allow them on our network. Okay, but that's an excuse we can put into the paperwork that says, you know, they had a valid reason for, but I need to kind of cut down what those valid reasons are.
I think unless anybody has a problem with that, I think we'll just move it back in your report to bring us an actual, you know, get with Doug, get it all set, and then we can approve it. But I think, I think that's the best way to do it.
Yeah, I think tonight, you're saying, "I ain't going to go through all the work," and then you guys say, "We're not interested." We're telling you tonight, we're interested, put it together.
Okay, and then I'll, what I'll do is I'll go for the next meeting.
Okay, perfect.
So, and so what, what you guys will need to do, if you don't mind, is you'll need to table that, because it's in, it was in the paper as we were going to hear it.
Okay.
Now, is that 21 what?
21-105.
105. 25-10, let me get the...
Twenty, Article 21-105-51.
Yep, there you go.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to table this.
I move that we table the Article 21?
Article 21.
105-51.
Thank you.
Until when?
Until either our next meeting or when Dustin has time to get things written up.
Seconded.
Okay, so we moved and seconded that we table the proposed changes to Article 21-105-51 until our next meeting. All approved, raise your hand. All opposed? Motion passes. We have tabled the Article 21 changes until next meeting.
And speaking of next meeting, there are two conditional use permits. They are both fairly simple, straightforward. They are both for sporting complexes.
Good.
An archery range on the east side, or, yeah, east side of Enterprise, an outdoor archery range, and then an archery slash gun shop just on Highway 4 north of Harrington. And the gentleman also is looking at doing an air-powered, like rifle range inside, like BB guns, that kind of thing, but also an indoor archery range.
Good.
So, that one will have a couple of interesting things, because right now, his only access is through a railroad right-of-way.
Oh, no.
And it's been that way for decades, but it's public access through a railroad right-of-way, and the way they worded it is really interesting, so I'm kind of looking into it, but it looks like it's, it's valid for them to, to use as, as their own entrance, because the way that a lot of them worded it a lot of times is for use of the property owner, which, whatever use that becomes, they're okay with. Otherwise...
Is the railroad still in use?
No, 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 it's, the railroad has been abandoned for...
Is that the Old Rock Island Line coming in from the north? Yeah, it's been abandoned for several years, yeah.
And the, the other side of that is, if they can't use that one for some reason, they're going to have to get an entrance off of Highway 4. We all know how working with KID is to get an entrance. And that's like a $15,000, $20,000 expense just to get the entrance. So they're, they're doing the legwork to find out if they can legally use that driveway.
Good.
But, other than that, so that's what we have next month, same, same bat time, same bat channel.
What's the date of our next meeting?
It would be May 12th, 7:00 PM.
We're back to that, to the second Tuesday.
Yes. The only reason I was gone, or we had to move it, was last week I was in Newton for economic development stuff, so... So we're back to those. And I've already sent out public notice, everything's in the paper already.
I've seen, I've seen one in last night's paper. Yeah.
So it's all out there. I got all that out while I was in Newton, so that we can get it out there, but, and I anticipate, I heard back from the, the developer for the country by design a couple weeks ago, they're working on a letter right now for the township, like we requested them to do, to get permission from the township to do their road, and an agreement with the township for how they're going to design the road, the township's road. And it sounds like they've come to an agreement, and they're working on getting it on paper. So, and I told them that we wouldn't entertain anything until we got that in writing to show that both the township and the developer had come to an agreement on what was going to happen to that road. Because that handles the drainage problems that a lot of people had, that handles the township's issue of, well, who's responsible for the road. So I, I think that, you know, and we did visit with the, with law enforcement about the issue of the trucks, and I'll have more of a report on it then, but basically, it's, you know, unless, unless they're out there sitting there all the time, the roads are designed for people going 55 miles an hour with the anticipation of a properly loaded vehicle. So they can't take into account overloaded vehicles and speeding, which means the rules aren't actually the way they're supposed to be, even though we all know that the rock